I'm calling the, yes, the January 9th meeting of the Riverside Township Board of Trustees to order, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As we call the roll, trustee DeCostola did notify me that if we got the actual snow, he would probably not be able to be here because of his job, so please go ahead and call the rest of the roll.
Trustee Clark.
Present.
Trustee Heilenbach.
Present.
Trustee Carroll.
Present.
Supervisor Wilt.
Here.
Oh, clerk race, it's all so.
Yes, all right, so we do have a quorum, and so the first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the December 12th board meeting. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the December 12th board meeting.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
A motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee Carroll to approve the minutes of the December 12th, 2023 meeting. Is there any discussion, any additions or corrections? Hearing none, then all in favor of accepting these minutes as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Okay, next item. Any communications?
We have one communication. It is a best buddies update for winter of 2023. It's sent by Mr. Adam Wilt, the state director of best buddies, and he touches on a couple of topics, shows some pictures. I think it's worth noting if anybody wants to have a quick look at it. I think he does a great job of just communicating to us some of the things that they're working on. It always intrigues me, so I'll hold on to that if anybody wants.
Trustee Clark?
Yes, I would like to state that Adam Wilt is the best buddies director, Illinois director of the year.
State director of the year.
State director of the year, yes.
He just got that title last night, so.
Congrats.
Yes, he's the state director of the year, thank you very much.
That's great, great accomplishment.
Yes, yes, all right, and that doesn't require any action, no other communications?
No.
All right then, supervisors report. Past month, I have been mostly engaged with assistance matters. Since our last meeting, I had several inquiries for emergency assistance that received application packets but never followed through. I was able to approve five new applicants for emergency assistance and completed a previously opened case, which included emergency safety repairs. There were water termination notices and several potential evictions. One case involved coordinating with the St. Vincent de Paul Society on a case where the township funds would not have avoided eviction, so they also contributed to it. I terminated one GA client who I learned had moved from the township, and of course I met regularly with other GA clients. Several rentals were held in the building for which I came in on the weekend to open, and I would review procedures with them and see that they had my contact information in case anything went wrong. There were some matters to work out with the accountants and legal counsel, and otherwise it was just the regular course of business. Due to the number of assistance cases, I did not get the decennial committee packet prepared for delivery to the county, but there is plenty of time. I don't anticipate any change from what the committee already approved, so this board's approval of the submission, when all is printed and bound, would be appreciated, so perhaps we can just pass that since it's on the agenda tonight. Budget preparation is next on my list of projects, and I will be taking a view toward the repayment of the loan for bridge repairs, and I'd like to get back to saving up for future building repairs. I recommend we seriously review any grant requests this year and throughout the next fiscal year with a focused lens, because our building must take more priority as a place that serves the community and many of its organizations. Preservation of this asset should be our focus, and some applicants may have to find other sources of support, so just be prepared as I start working through and making recommendations. I think we're going to need to limit grants or community partnerships unless they actually really fit the bill of what the township needs to be doing. That's all I have to report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Nothing? Okay, the assessor is not here, so trustees reports. Trustee Carroll.
No report.
Thank you. Trustee Heilenbach?
No report. Mental health board meets next Wednesday.
Okay, trustee Clark?
I just want to report that senior exercise class continues to go well, and I would like maybe sometime this spring to set up a meeting, either like right after exercise class or something, with a police officer to talk to the seniors about scams, because I've noticed in the news recently, there have been a lot of scams, and a lot of new ones are coming up.
Yes, that would be, that would be great if you have a particular date in mind. I'm sure that Chief Buckley would be happy to help out. He did a, I know that he recently did a similar thing for contractors on some of the, you know, how to keep their equipment safe and things, because there have been a lot of, a lot of things going on, and it was a general awareness thing, so he had several of his officers that participated on specialized things, so something like that for our seniors, I'm sure would be, would be very valuable, so thank you for that suggestion.
Yeah, that's what.
Very good, and there's nothing else?
No.
So we will move on on the agenda. There is no mental health reports, so under unfinished business, if you are amenable, like I said, I don't expect anything other than possibly some type graphical errors to be changed in the decennial committee report. You have all been on the decennial committee. Perhaps this board should just pro forma, pass the approval of the report to be submitted to the county. Do I have a motion for that?
Sure. I make a motion that we approve the decennial committee's report for the submission to Cook County.
I'll second.
I have a motion by trustee Heilenbach, seconded by trustee Carroll to approve the decennial committee's report for submission to Cook County, and I will bring you the bound copy before it's submitted. We'll have a, a copy available for public inspection here as well, when that's all pulled together.
I'll take it down there.
Okay. Thank you.
I have this picture of the committee on the swinging bridge. I don't know if you want to put that in there or not.
That could be done, thank you.
That's a great looking group of individuals.
Yes, it is, isn't it wonderful?
Yeah, it's a good picture of.
Thank you, I will include that, yes.
If anybody else would like a copy of that.
When we were touring, touring all the facilities with the committee.
I was so lucky to have. I could identify the family that photo bombed us from the van.
Those were ancillary members of the committee. Very good, thank you so much. New business.
Did you vote on it?
Oh, I'm sorry, that wouldn't, thank you very much.
I think there was a second.
Yes, there was a motion by trustee Heilenbach, seconded by trustee Carroll, to approve the decennial committee's report for submission to Cook County, and I don't.
I wasn't sure if I missed it.
Yeah, no, it was so.
She basically asked, but I didn't think you voted.
Thank you, thank you very much. So all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you. The, as I indicated in my report, if there are any things that you would like to see happen in the next budget, other than what I mentioned about, you know, tightening up our belts to make sure that we pay off our debt, this coming year, we will have an interest payment due in June, an interest payment due at the beginning of December, and the first $60,000 repayment of the loan will come in, I believe it's September, so, or it's in the fall. So that is something that, you know, you will see in the budget. You'll see a line because we did have an interest payment. You'll see that we will build in a line for that repayment, because we did make an interest payment at the beginning of December, but there was no real specific place within the budget to put it. It went out of the general bridge fund, but that's already been overspent, because we actually paid more than had been, or rather, we borrowed and repaid more than the contract price, because we repaid the township from the loan for such things as legal fees and things like that, that had, had been incurred, some architectural studies and things like that, so. Other than that, any thoughts on the budget in terms of a preliminary discussion, what you'd like me to focus on as, as I start building this?
Are we going to have a special budget meeting?
I think we should at some point. We could do that as, like during one of our pre-scheduled committee of the whole. I don't know when, when you'd like to do that, I mean, we could start on this at the February committee of the whole.
Why don't we, I would make a recommendation that we do do that, because we're going to have to do some cutting, obviously, and we might as well, you know, get not just one, but a couple of these committee of the whole meetings.
Sure.
In there before we.
So that means that the first, the next meeting, which is on February, Tuesday, February 6th, would be the, would be, unless something else comes up, the predominant topic for that meeting, for that, excuse me, that agenda will be the budget.
Okay.
The 6th, we're saying?
That's, yes, Tuesday, February 6th, and that's 6:30.
Right.
They've already been noticed for the whole year, so basically that way, if we don't need it, we simply can post a cancellation rather than rescheduling.
Supervisor, there were a couple of general thoughts that I had related to, to budget expenditures, that I wondered if, I guess I, I would be looking for guidance related to it in terms of how the board thought would be the best way to approach two issues. The first is the conversion of the digitizing of files that are in audio cassette form. The issue sort of came up again, you know, after our proposed need to record today's meeting, and so I considered buying equipment or something along those lines to, to be able to capture them. It's a simple, cheap fix, right, for $50, we can go get a little. Of course, that perpetuates the little cassette audio thing that we have.
Actually, all of those cassettes are old enough that those are all, they were all closed session meetings. All of them have been committed to minutes, minutes have been approved, so I believe that those can simply, if next month at the meeting, we have a motion to destroy those, I think that that is all we'll need, please.
I'll double check, but I think that's correct, from what you're explaining, it sounds like they would hit all the requirements.
Right, right, because it's been more than six months, I believe there's a six-month rule, and, you know, we haven't.
That's right, I think, I'm trying to, you might have to keep it longer than six months. I know there's a, a six, a general kind of rule that every six months or so, you should meet to discuss closed session minutes and whether you can release any portions of them.
If you could research that and have us, so that I can put it on the agenda in the performing.
Whatever the timeframe is, it sounds like you're beyond it anyway, so that these.
Yeah, all of those are from prior clerks, and, Joe, you've been on for almost.
Almost a year, yeah, that'll be a year next month.
Almost a year.
Is there a local records act?
There is a local records retention act, but once they've been.
This is on the OMA, I think this is on the open meetings.
Yeah, you're just talking the recordings, and they've been committed to minutes.
They've all been committed to minutes, and they, those were all approved.
And approved as released or non-confidential than at that.
I don't think they're mutually exclusive, though, local records and OMA.
No, but, but it's my understanding, I know that at some point, we actually, I think trustee, or clerk Dropka at one point wanted to do that. I don't know if we actually did. I think we did some at that time, but then we discovered when his predecessor, well, there were a bunch of things dropped off.
That, that wouldn't, you could destroy, under the local records act, you can destroy the cassettes if we made a digital copy of that. There's, the original records, it was just a true and accurate copy, it doesn't have to.
Yeah, so that's where I'm going with it. We either have, if we have an obligation to preserve it, then I would propose that we either retain a service to do those hundreds, that hundred tapes, or we, we buy the software, we buy the equipment that we need, and we begin the process of digitizing those files, and then, so one or, one or the other, it'd be great if we could just get rid of it, frankly.
Well, here's, and if, if it does technically fall under the local records act, you just ask for permission to destroy it, too, so I mean.
And which we need to do anyway, because we have.
They would probably grant under those circumstances.
Through the, through that SOS process?
Yes.
Is that what we're talking about? Okay.
Secretary of State controls that.
Yeah, so, so that would be the first, and then ultimately, if we need to retain any of that, or for the purposes of retaining whatever digital records we do generate, how and where we house them, that gets me to the second issue. So we have a lot of paper-related documents that we'll probably want to deal with in the same manner. I, I, I'm a little apprehensive about just simply asking for leave to destroy those documents, because I, as of right now, I perceive it to be not a huge cost, a cost, of course, to digitize those documents, to go through the process of feeding them into a copier, to get them scanned and all of that, you know, can be in the neighborhood of $5,000 or even $10,000 to do, but once we have them in digital form, they can more easily be archived and stored, and, you know, just extracted for various purposes, and then, and then it's not just gone forever, right? Like, I think we've seen that happen. But ultimately, we get to the question of then where and how do we house them? Some of the services that I've looked into have a perpetual fee, and I, I just, I'm not a huge fan of that. I would love for us to be able to establish, if we have the wherewithal, some type of hard drive, maybe a redundancy, type of closed system that isn't subject to be hacked and everything like, you know, that isn't open to the internet, but just serves as some type of backup storage where we can put all of those files into, for future reference. I don't know what that would cost or how it would work. The alternative, of course, is to hire a service and pay a monthly or annual fee, and some of them, from what I can see, runs into the hundreds or even thousands of dollars per month, and I don't think we need all of that. I, I think that we could probably get by with a terabyte hard drive, and we, we kind of drop our files into it as, as we scan them in and, you know, and send them in, so maybe I'm just not quite clear on what the latest technology on that is, but I think that it's something we probably want to begin the process of getting to, and so perhaps we can line item a few dollars to, to kind of upgrade that process. And I, I think I would rather not that be a task that falls to the staff to do, the scanning of documents or whatever. I just, I think they've already got a lot going, I don't know that we want to add kind of a new process for, for them to, to deal with that, so I would just as soon consider, you know, hiring an outside party or a service that does this kind of work, and then, and then incorporating it for our own purposes.
All right, so that's something to, to think about for the budget as well.
What was your other thing?
Those are, those are the two things, the digital audio or the paper.
Okay, all right. Yeah, the, I mean, we can get the secretary of state's office and to identify what, what records could be destroyed, I don't know.
That's, and this doesn't come up a whole lot with the local governments, but it does come up from time to time, it's one of those kind of murkier things, the local record retention act.
Right.
The, and Mike Dropka, I think, raised it the last time, probably a couple of years ago.
Right.
Starting to ask some questions about that, so I think we talked about maybe having a representative of the secretary of state come in.
Right.
And some places have a schedule in place already, it's often dated, so whether you have one or don't have one.
I don't.
They can probably come in and help you set up, you know, what categories of records do you have, how long do you have to keep them, and then you're just on a regular rotation, asking for permission on a regular basis to destroy what falls off.
I think that the last time we had that was like over 20 years ago, probably.
That wouldn't be uncommon, I mean, that's, that's.
Right.
Tends to what, you know, we hear when this issue does occasionally come up.
And it does get overwhelming when then we have to go in search of something, so.
But that, that's kind of beyond the storage, is just to get, maybe to help maintain going forward.
Right.
What you have and how long you have it, getting an updated.
Right, well, because they can tell you what you do need to.
They're supposed to be very helpful. I've never sat through the process, but I understand that they're.
And I've heard presenters at township association meetings about, yeah, they, they have field representatives, and they kind of work regionally, so somebody would come in who works this particular area and, and review it.
Supposed to be helpful, from what I've heard, again, I've kind of sat through and seen the minutia of it, but.
Right, that's my understanding.
I've heard good things.
Okay, good. Anything else that you'd like us to, you know, if I need to do any research before this meeting or pull any data together, just let me know, okay?
Okay.
All righty. Then the next item is the discussion of our senior exercise program. This came up because I received notice from the, the instructor that his rates are going up, and since last year, we had 149 sessions, even a small increase is impactful, and since then, he has come to me and indicated that he can hold off until our new budget year and so forth if we like to. But he also, in that conversation, he stopped in yesterday, and he indicated that the class, well, he, he brought in a calendar, and now he's asking people to block off, like for example, if there's snowbirds and they're going to be gone for a month and not coming, to just mark their name that they won't be there certain dates, because it has become a little bit hard to manage. Right now, he has identified 49 individuals who have at some point come to the class. Since they don't have to make an appointment to come, it, the potential is there for 49 of them to show up in one day, and that would be totally unmanageable. So he also indicated that he, he brought a younger trainer to one of the classes the other day to assist and to introduce her, and, you know, so it's just a matter of, I told him that I wasn't ready to say, oh, yes, we'll, we'll go with that, that this would be a good time, perhaps to come to a written agreement. We don't have it, because we started this as a grant, and it's now been approximately seven years since we started the program. Started out one day a week, within a few months, we went to two days a week, within the year, we were at three days a week, and other than a COVID break, we've pretty much been doing that ever since. So again, in terms of budget, this is something we'll need to take a look at, maybe we should have an agreement, and that's, that's why this is here today.
That's never a bad idea, Supervisor Wilt, to have an agreement in place, but I, I also, is this his business, if you will, or are we paying him?
Well, that's, that's part of the discussion we would like to have. If we have an agreement, then we can set some terms as to what our expectations would be. He's always been treated in bookkeeping and everything else as an independent contractor.
Right.
However, there is no contract per se. We have purchased some exercise tools over the years that are ours, so that people can use. There's things like the resistance bands and weights and medicine balls and things like that, so there's a, there's a bin of items that we have purchased, there's like a ladder that they step through and things like that, just some very basic things. But again, we, since we treat him as an independent contractor, we don't really control how he runs it, we trust him to do that, he's a professional doing that, he has his own studio as well, he does private one-on-one training, and in recent, well, I would say, over the last year to maybe two years, one of his, one of his employees also does many of the classes rather than him. Started out, he was going to be out of town, or he was sick, and the other person came, and now it's probably about 50/50. So if we want a specific individual, it's something that we should, you know, command to.
Well, I mean, we, we hired him for him to do the class, right?
Yes. That, that was the, okay, thank you, because I didn't have discussion of that, I was not aware yet.
Then if he's an independent contractor, he should be paid for the classes that he teaches. That's just my opinion, and if he's got a, another guy that comes in, that person should be paid for the classes that they teach.
As an independent contractor?
As an independent contractor.
Yeah, so, I mean, the question is, yes, we pay him in his own name, we do not pay a corporation, we don't pay an LLC, the checks are cut to this individual, and I trust that if he's got a substitute, that he's paying them something, but, you know, these are just things, I think I'd like to see this worked out into a little bit more detail.
Spelled out, right, I agree.
Yeah, and so, you know, my big issue is that he's not teaching every class, and we did hire him to teach every, every class, and, I mean, that's, you know, there are days he's going to be sick, and there are days, you know, a couple of weeks, he's going to be on vacation, that's fine, but now Ed is teaching, you know, as you said, 50% of the time, and, you know, I think Ed should be paid.
Perhaps at a different rate.
On his own.
Okay.
You know, and it's concerning that Jerry is bringing in another person to train, and I don't, I don't think that that's his decision.
And it didn't, yeah, I, it didn't sound, it sounded like it was when we have these really big classes, because we've had as many as, I think, 31 people one time, so we wanted, you know, so that becomes a safety issue. He can't watch everybody when there's that many people moving around the room, so I think that this probably warrants more discussion, and we should schedule perhaps a meeting with him to, for a meeting of the minds, you know, figure out what we want to do.
Well, the other thing, and I will say this, I know of three seniors that take these classes, and they absolutely love them.
Exactly.
So let's tread lightly.
Yes, no, it's, it's not like I want to replace him, I just would like to come to some terms.
I think we can work something out, and, and I don't think that we should give the guy the third degree on any of this.
No.
You know, we never had any type of rules and regulations, but the class has gotten more and more popular.
Yeah.
And like I said, the seniors, I hear it every day, every day.
And things have changed since he's started this, you know, and that's why we need to change.
Absolutely, you have to.
With the times.
Life's about you.
Yeah, we have to love on it.
All right, do you want to make that a topic also at our committee of the whole, or do you want to meet separately with him? What is your pleasure on, how do you want to go forward with this? Do you want, all right.
I personally think that you should meet with the supervisor, and of course, since trustee Clark is the person in charge of the senior program, maybe the three of you can sit down first, and then you can bring your discussions.
A proposal, okay.
A proposal to the board, that would be my guess.
You willing to do that?
I can do that.
Very good, all right, then we'll schedule something, figure out when we're all available, and we can sit down and do that.
And Mike, you said in your email that we could require him to teach a certain amount in our contract.
Right, try and negotiate some arrangement with them, you can certainly make that, I guess, a condition of keeping him on, so to speak, or, you know, if he's not agreeable to that, I guess he can push back on that and explain why, but at some point, you know, the party, both parties will have to agree to some arrangement, but.
I want to pick an initial meeting.
Yeah, but I think you lay that out, that that's an integral part of keeping on with him, is that it's him.
Now, I, I have to say, I have not, I don't know if any of you have, but I've never heard a complaint about Ed either, you know. heard a complaint about Ed either, you know? I mean, the people seem to like that, and they're in a routine, and some of them come religiously every class, and some of them only come sporadically and seasonally and things like that, so...
Well, is it, I know we had to limit it to roadside township residents.
The 46 or 49 people are all township residents that, that still remain, you know, so...
How do we know that?
How do we know that? Because they sign in every time.
With their addresses?
Yes, well, I mean, once they've signed in with their address, we don't ask them to fill that out every time, then they sign in, but anytime it's somebody new, we require the address. Yeah, for a while, when we didn't have that many people, it's like, bring your friends, you know, the movies, we don't, we don't check residency for a lot of our other things, but...
I'd just like to see, you know, this is one of our popular, most popular programs. I would like to see that our township partners get first crack at the class instead of some...
Absolutely. Yeah, no, we've never turned away a township resident.
Of course.
I mean, there was one point when somebody who started coming was really not up to the, was coming with a spouse, and the one person just wasn't capable physically of doing much of anything, and that would have required a lot more attention from an instructor, so I think it worked itself out. I don't think Jerry had to, to do anything, but I mean, he keeps a locker up there, too, for those who have temporary injuries or something, so... All right, we, this is to be continued. We will meet with him and, and talk about some of the concerns. Any other concerns before we plan that session? Okay. Okay, there's nothing else on the agenda then, other than moving towards warrants, and I don't even, I didn't ask anyone, would you, who would be willing to?
Taking notes, this is how it's supposed to be done.
Okay, trustee Highlandbach moves the board authorize and ratify payments of the bills identified on the general warrant for January 2024 in the amount of $18,283.18, as presented to the board this, hang on.
Ninth.
Ninth day, not even filled out, my... Ninth day of January 2024.
Okay. I have a motion to wait her a second.
I'll second.
Motion by trustee Highlandbach, seconded by trustee Carroll, to approve the general warrant list in the total amount of $18,283.18 for the month of January 2024. Any questions, any discussion? Hearing none, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion by trustee Highlandbach that the board ratify and authorize payment of the amounts indicated on the following warrants. The utility warrant for January 2024 in the amount of $1,593.05. The payroll warrant for January 2024 in the amount of $17,906.26. The health warrant for 20, January of 2024 in the amount of $3,166.14. Grants in, for January 2024 in the amount of $5,344...
Forty-one.
Pardon me?
Forty-one dollars.
Forty-one, sorry, it looked like a four, my fault. General assistant warrant for January 2024 in the amount of $15,215.65. The township radio players warrant for January 2024 in the amount of $200. And the food pantry warrant for January 2024 in the amount of $266.44. All of the above presented to the board this ninth day of January 2024.
Thank you. Do I hear a second to that motion?
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Highlandbach, seconded by trustee Clark, to approve the following warrants for the month of January 2024. Utility warrant in the amount of $1,593.05. Payroll warrant in the amount of $17,906.26. The health warrant in the amount of $3,166.14. The grants warrant in the amount of $5,341. General assistance warrant in the amount of $15,215.65. The township radio players warrant in the amount of $200. And the food pantry warrant in the amount of $266.44. Any, any questions, any additions, corrections? Then if not, would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Just note on the statements of revenues and expenditures, that taxes did continue to come in, but I don't expect, expect anything to come in until probably early March anymore, so... And that is all I have to comment on. If you have any questions on those, of course, those questions are always invited. I don't see anyone from the public here tonight, therefore, I would undertake a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Motion by trustee Highlandbach, seconded by trustee Carroll, to adjourn this meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you very much.